To order, uh, so everyone knows this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. Uh, it will also be shown on YouTube in the future. That being said, would everybody mind sending a justice's pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, number three is confirm the next meeting date of October second. Uh, if October second is the first Wednesday in October, which I think it is, uh, the next meeting will be scheduled for October second, six P M. in this meeting room. Everybody agree? Okay. We have a public hearing scheduled for six fifteen, but it's not six fifteen, so we can move on to other business at that time. As we may have residents, butters that are attending, and it is scheduled for six fifteen, so. So we can move on to item four B. Forty-four Winter Street Business District Corridor. Done a little bit of research, I have a handout for you guys. Um, these are all the. These are all the properties along Winter Street. It's all from that jail and stuff, if you wanna get on there and go from there, form your opinions. You don't, oh, too many, okay. What I found out, as I mentioned, it went through the street from town line to town lane line, contains approximately fifty houses. Actually, I thought there were more on the south side than the north side. Come to find out, just along Route forty-four, um, you see in the lower right-hand corner, I have the totals. And this is as accurate as I could probably get with it. I'm not saying it's a hundred percent, but uh, twenty-one homes or businesses on the south side and twenty-eight on the north side. After doing some research of my own, I, I find that there's only actually a couple of properties on the north side that, um, may be possibilities for marijuana overlay district. So, uh, that being said, the business zone only extends three hundred fifty feet north and south of Route forty-four. These two properties would need more than that because of the way they're geographically sit on the property. They have short frontage, but it turns into a lot of acreage in the back. I'm gonna continue this, so our next meeting, we can discuss it now, but, um, I'm not sure that this is the right area for, in my opinion at least, for another overlay district. There's not as much area as I thought there was, and it's pretty close to the other one, so. Everybody wants to talk about anything with this, please go ahead. We were up talking to, actually Woody went up and then I went up right after him, but up around, uh, Zeke's, uh, he's not interested in doing anything. I'm not sure either one of these people would, but, uh, unless there's any comments, if you just wanna research this stuff and then we'll talk about it again next meeting.
I have a question, so. The three hundred and fifty feet, is that from the center of forty-four, or is it from the edge of the road, or?
Center.
From the center, yeah, so that would, that only leaves about two hundred and some odd feet for, for actual construction.
Yeah, one of the, one of the people is, is interested, their property doesn't open up until you get back almost three hundred feet.
That sounds like property.
Do I?
Be interested in what the, um.
Trebekos is the same thing.
Those are the property on the south side.
Which one?
Those are the property on the south side, further down.
I don't think that would be suitable, but, but check it out.
They have a lot of acreage.
Yeah.
I don't know, you know, it's, it's already business zones. I'm not sure we can do with anything with Route forty-four, but, uh, we can discuss it in the future. We did come up with, after speaking with Zeke's, there's somebody interested up on Elm Street, actually, who would be interested in perhaps moving forward, but I think that one would become spot zoning, uh, the individual piece of property. It's right across from, uh, Harry and Anestabrook.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with our intended item tonight.
No, had nothing to do with Route forty-four, but.
If that landowner wants to approach us.
Right, exactly. So if you wanna check this out, get any thoughts, we'll discuss it again next meeting, we'll put it on here, Jennifer, next meeting. I just wanted you all to have a copy of what's up there and, uh, form your own opinions, and we can either, you know, thumbs down or thumbs up on doing something up there, so, alright.
Would it be, um, in our best interest to have a motion just to, uh, take this under advisement for another?
Yeah, under advisement and continue it until, actually a month would probably be good.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, um, take this under advisement, um, the possible business district on, um, Route forty-four.
Thank you, sir.
Until next month.
Okay, motions, motion being second, take under advisement and continue for one month, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, right now, how close are we out of six fifteen?
Five minutes.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, I think call a recess for five minutes until six fifteen. Oh, we gotta prove the minutes.
Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-first?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of meeting of August twenty-first.
Second. Motion made second, approve the minutes of August twenty-first, all those in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries, thank you. Do we have any good correspondence?
We did receive an applica- uh, package today for, um, it looks like a solar, um, national grid is doing some solar work in Rehoboth, but it's just a notification of the surrounding towns. Just received it today, so I wasn't, didn't really have a chance to look at it, but just a notification on our land.
Oh, is that the power, the?
I wanna say over by North Street.
It's the one that they've been fighting for two years there abouts in Rehoboth?
Something about that, um.
Yeah.
So I, again, we just received it late this afternoon, so I did not get a chance to really deep, deep into it, but.
It, it's a, basically, I think it's just a transfer station.
Yes, the transfer station.
And Rehoboth is gonna get nothing from it.
Yeah.
Other than the, the station and the lines running through their land.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, if they're getting nothing out of it, I would kinda side with Rehoboth on that one, but.
Yeah.
It's, uh, I don't think it's anything we need to get into.
No.
Unless they're looking for our, our input on something, but, um.
No, I, to be honest with you, I can't unhandle what else we've been exploring on this. Just a couple of field notes from Wellington Acres and Cedar Estates, they've been doing some paving work, I believe. I think that's what those field inspectors feel it's hard, so they're trying to wrap things up over there. Um, pretty much it, I don't know what it is, I'm quiet.
Is this, uh?
I think as far as the kind of bylaw, if you wanted to go over that quickly.
Yeah, I wanna read this one here because this pertains to Town of Dayton. Notice of public hearing, Town of Dayton, Mass. zoning Board of Appeals, notices hereby given that the Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October twenty-third, twenty nineteen, at seven o'clock P M. At the Dayton Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. Zero two seven one five on the application of Norman Fournia for property located at four twenty Main Street, shown on Assessors Map seventeen lot sixty-five, for decision pursuant pursuant to sections article twenty, Article Sections twenty-seven hundred dimensional regulations for accessory structures, section twenty-seven ten, se- section twenty-seven twenty, setbacks and yards, twenty-seven forty height general and table of dimensional requirements. Oh, it's to ex- the bottom line is he's to extend the front of an existing garage at four twenty Main Street, so. If you're around there and you're concerned, again, the hearing is Wednesday, October twenty-third. The, uh, site visit for Strawberry Fields was canceled, or postponed it said, uh, as a result of a letter from the Board of Health, which indicated the situation with triple E and we basically warned against the visit. Zoning Board of Appeals will be meeting to discuss future site visits, as well as other Strawberry Fields discussion points. And that next one, their meeting is Tuesday, October fifteenth, at twenty nineteen, seven P M. Pretty much that's the correspondence.
That's six fifteen.
This is, uh, oh, man. Yeah, um. This is being six fifteen, we'll open the public hearing, would, would someone please read the notification on the paper, I think Tim has a copy.
Uh, leave a notice, uh, Dayton Planning Board, September eighteen, twenty nineteen, at six fifteen P M., Town Hall, Hall Level Conference Room, nine seven nine Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. zero two seven one five. Notices hereby given, the Dayton Planning Board will conduct their public hearing on the special permit application by Kenneth and Pamela Nicholson for approval of the creation of one retreat lot located at zero Main Street, being shown as Assessors Map sixteen, lot thirty-six and thirty-seven, pursuant to sections fifty ninety and fifty-three hundred of the Town of Dayton zoning bylaws. All interested parties should attend the hearing. Copies of the plans are available for inspection in the Planning Board Office, nine seven nine Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. During normal business hours, Dayton Planning Board, Thomas Myers Chairman, Timothy Bryant's Vice Chairman, Robert Bonner, Clerk Joseph Figurino Member and Robert Woods Member, and this is in the newspaper on, um, September tenth of twenty nineteen.
Okay, just, um, have all the, has the applicant met all the requirements to hold this public hearing?
Everything with the exception of the peer review payment, so we had discussed that right before, so he's aware and he will be supplying the check for that and the W nine. And then once we receive that, we will have the peer review from our engineer.
Okay, are we all?
So we can open the public hearing and then?
Well, we just opened it, but.
Uh, sorry.
Um.
Um, and then we can, um.
Continue.
You can continue, but then you'll have to, um, table or continue the public hearing so that we can review the.
Until we get the review.
Until we get the review.
The engineer.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
So be the best.
Are we gonna be ready in two weeks? Do we think we should be?
I'm gonna have the, uh, paperwork and the check tomorrow.
Yeah, as long as we have that, then I can give it to the treasurer right away.
Okay.
And she can do her thing.
Yeah, two weeks, two weeks, motion to continue.
Yep, um, I would suggest that maybe you can, uh, go ahead and at least take a quick look at the thing and then take any, I'm assuming that these people here, the residents, the abutters. So that at least they can have.
That would be the October second meeting, I guess.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this public hearing until October second of twenty nineteen.
Is it second?
Are we not gonna?
Well, yeah, we should.
Listen to the abutters.
I think we should.
We're, we're gonna do that, yeah.
Okay, so I would hold off on motion to continue.
I'll rescind that motion.
Yeah.
I'll rescind the motion to continue.
At the moment? Okay.
Yeah, we can hear from the abutters now. Anybody here for this hearing?
I.
Okay. No.
Just, um, I think maybe we should explain to the abutters exactly, or give, um, excuse me, Mr. Maker, send an opportunity to explain to the abutters what the plan is, so that the abutters are familiar what's going on, and then they can give the feedback.
Does everybody know where the retreat lot is? Okay. We can explain what you're doing up there.
Sure.
Any questions?
We have other questions and we can just stay here. So we've basically established an eight-acre lot at the highest point of Main Street, and with the intent of the lot being used for a single family dwelling.
What's that say?
Anything else that?
Where is it, right here?
Right here. This is what.
So all of that is, um, this for one house?
Yes.
Correct.
And this is the.
It's described in the paper as a retreat house.
Retreat lot, which means only one house could be built on that property. In purpose to, that's the property here, that's the high spot.
Now, you're gonna be entering?
Me entering Main Street?
Yep.
Yes.
In between Cotton and Miranda, okay, handle the location.
Yeah, they can never subdivide that property afterwards.
So it's just one house?
Once it's granted a, a, a retreat lot, only one home will ever be on that property. They can never come back, they can't get a variance, they can't do anything other than build that one house and a garage, or, but it's strictly for one resident only.
So because the land is, there's not forty-five feet there to make a.
Right, right. And that's how we prevented, uh, some smaller subdivisions going in on, on parcels like that. So we created the retreat lots for that reason, because they're desirable for people, you, you know, they're eight acres or more. So you get some privacy, and you don't have to worry about neighbors building next to you, and you don't have to worry about subdivisions coming in. See, that potentially could prob- how many acres there?
Eight.
Eight.
You don't know where, you don't know where it'd be perked for the house.
Yeah, it's gonna be perked everywhere.
For all of the people.
Yes. This is the.
I mean, there was probably potential for five houses in there.
Yeah.
You know, so.
It probably was, yep.
So now we have one, that was the purpose of our retreat lots.
It's, it's pretty land up there and, um, there's been quite a bit of interest in it.
Any questions from anyone?
The concern that I have, the other retreat lot that was just sold and that just stopped.
That wasn't a tr- retreat lot.
That wasn't a retreat lot?
No, it wasn't.
Um, it just seemed like as you were cutting that note in.
It's not a road, sir.
Uh-huh.
It's not, there's no.
That opening that you're going in?
That's a driveway.
Okay.
And I, and I'm not doing that, that lot is owned by someone else.
It just seems like they're taking so much of your tree, your, your borderline there.
Well, I'd speak to them anyway because they did not treat it as a property, so I'm speaking.
I'm, I'm worried that that's gonna happen. This is my daughter's house here, and then Scotty's house is here, I mean, if they do the same, what you call it, a road, I mean, not a road, it's a.
It's not a road.
Yeah.
They're talking about twelve nineteen down at the.
Yeah, but it's.
Just, just said.
No, it's not my property.
No.
That's a whole nother person.
But, I mean, the way that this, this would, this driveway was cut in, I mean, is all this tree line here gonna be gone?
Um, not, I'm not removing it, I have no plans on removing it, and I plan on staying as far away from any of the abutters as possible with, starting with the perk, which is where I'm gonna stop any, any activity, construction activity.
Yeah.
So then whoever buys it can make that decision.
Yeah, just by the length of the margin of where he is buying, Mr. Murray, he's over two hundred feet to buy it.
Several hundred.
Yeah.
Several hundred feet, couple hundred feet.
At, at least three, three hundred if not more.
It's, it's pretty unlikely somebody's gonna cut all the trees though, that would be a pretty, uh.
So we don't even know how, where the house is gonna be to your.
Well, there is a, there is a.
That proposed home right here, okay, that's, which is probably, you know, I don't even know what the, the.
Two hundred feet, I think.
Two hundred feet, so if you were to do a hundred and fifty here, actually, this is, uh, is our own plan, so. You, you're probably two to three hundred feet away from this.
Yeah, this is like a hundred.
Actually, this is a good plan because you could put a fifty feet behind the other.
And it's, it's not the final plan, whatever bills we're submitting up.
One is, yeah.
It's actually a hundred and twenty.
Let me ask you a question, if I'm just here to say yes, it's okay, do I have to stand? Do we, do we take a vote on it?
No.
Oh, okay, so.
It's just, well, you're quite a. You ended up, you both are gonna have, and we do the voting.
Yeah, okay.
You know, anthetosis, you're good with it as long as they, you can go up to your landlord.
They've got forty feet, we have that.
So there's four, there's forty feet from here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Like the great, there's a graveyard right, right here.
Yeah, it's, yeah, over here it doesn't matter, it's over here, this is forty feet wide. No, that's the requirement at the planning board.
Yeah.
Does your daughter have a property markers back here?
Yeah.
Or these are all marked up for you, so you know where they are?
Well, I don't know about the back of Scotty's house, but I know this, I know there's a couple of them, yeah.
There, there are markers, there are markers, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, it had all, they go up in my.
So was there?
Correct.
This is the old, uh, this, um, old school.
This is the old, um.
Is this the Redmond property?
Is this what it used to be?
Used to be Redmond property up there.
Is that where you are now, sir?
I believe so, I'm not.
His daughter here.
Okay.
This is my daughter's house?
No, this is my daughter's house here.
Okay.
This is Scotty's.
Yeah.
Oh, is he not here?
No, Scotty, Scotty's not, he's not here.
It's no castle, yeah.
I shouldn't have known that was this one.
Yeah.
This is like, this is.
He's Mickey. You know who we are?
I know.
I know.
Authorizing the property.
Well, this, this he's keeping here.
This one's.
Yeah.
I thought this was one. Oh, I see.
I know the area.
In order to, in order to do a retreat lot, it has to.
Well, Randy got it cut something a long time ago.
That was crazy, Randy as well.
That's correct, yeah, that's, that's, that's correct, so, I mean.
And now this is where you have an arrow, and you want Scotty's house, it's all up.
I just, and I, I play on that as far to the center as possible, and.
It's a nice plan.
It is a nice plan, it's, it's beautiful land, it's gonna make a nice piece of property for the town and.
We used to own that.
Oh, yeah.
My father had. It's really, oh, yeah. We own both sides.
It's one sound from the top.
They all gotta be expensive, so they gotta be good.
So I don't wanna, I don't wanna see a twenty lot set to be going in that direction.
All the good friends, most of them don't see it behind you.
We knew your, we knew your intent, I knew your intent, I should've said.
It's pretty tight, it's probably with the plan, but thank you.
Alright, um.
This is my property here.
That's, so what are we here on, Roboto?
Yeah, we're working on the assessment.
When you're probably.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, I'm pretty glad he had that, like, he came, but, uh, I knew he was gonna be all set.
I did not go up and cut the drive.
It was pretty tough.
Tax, tax.
Well, you guys have a little experience.
Yeah, he's, he's happy as a.
A lot of possibility, there's a driveway that's gone in.
How about that?
I, I just wanna be careful.
This is, this is behind my eyes. What are you doing, sir?
My question is this.
This is a swap.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna be here till, I'm, I'm gonna say what you are, no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, uh.
The deer is the answer.
You're actually zoning. Yes, I, yeah. I don't, I don't wanna, I should zone it way back out here.
Are confused, is this yours?
I can't.
You're in Mr. House's old house?
No, it's, it's wrong.
This is the property.
Doesn't seem right.
We did.
So you're in the one.
All she would have to do is get some memoirs.
Yes.
I would ask.
If they were to build back here, it'd be another whole other set of lands, and I'm not playing on any of the old ones.
Because it's. This is, this is, they were talking about, so we're talking. I meant that part of the conversation.
I, I love the land and I love the privacy, just like. Oh, yeah. So I, I just, this is, this is my plan, and, you know, that's, that's all I've got, I understand, I, I'm right to.
Yes, yeah.
This is us.
Oh, thanks, understood.
There is a driveway, and there's clearing that's been done here, that's not.
No, no, the, no, no. But, drives, sir, the driveway is here, driveway is here, this is, these are wetlands, nobody's, nobody's putting driveway in. But this is not my land anywhere.
Yeah, but it's over here, but, um, in the, the discussion we're having there was that everybody was assuming that this is connected to this. No, but it's not, it's not.
Yes, this is, this is.
So your eight acres is from here over, and this is a separate lot, and it's sort of a retreat lot, correct?
It has the front, it has the frontage, proper frontage, but not.
And it might be as much smaller, sort of, in the meantime, we can come back and just, it'll be continuous. It's, it's hurting out the confusion because everybody's probably. That's all, thank you.
No, this is a nice, this is a nice.
It's a, it's a, it's a good thing for Dayton, in my opinion.
Oh, my God, I haven't seen him in a while, we had a little battle.
Is it for you?
It is, I live over here, and I don't want too much activity in my back lawn, I, I mean, I have a lot of opportunities to, to look at, a summer vision, and I, and I didn't want to keep it doing that.
How much longer is she getting in? She's seventy-nine, she's forty-five.
That, are you selling it?
That sounds interesting.
I'm gonna be selling it.
She's red-looking, too.
Is that a, your mother about moving there back here or not?
Uh, she's, her, she's beyond the point of building in Scotty.
Are you Mark or Dave?
Dave.
Okay, you shaved, huh?
Huh?
Hopefully, uh, some young family.
Yeah.
It's not on Facebook, is it?
According to the plan.
I, uh, just like a wallet.
Oh, yeah, someday I hope he's just like.
He said.
Still have a rabbit in us? Huh? Still have a rabbit there?
I have no power.
Every day's a long time.
Make a motion to approve it, unless you gotta walk there.
I got a question.
For the green pies, rabbit and goat.
This, this lot here, lot two, extends all the way around here, right?
Yeah, me and my brother are those bartenders, we're like five and six.
Is this the current lot layout?
This is a separate piece of.
Moving on.
Right, so really, that should be, this reference should be taken off, it just been, should be shown as a lot, just like these.
Just like these, correct.
Okay, I was, I was back to the final plan, these.
Be that smart.
That was confusing.
And soak it all in.
Okay, but this is all one lot that keeps over here and gives you the whole area, that's right?
Correct, yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, this is five point three three acres.
And this is one point six, and this is two.
Two point for something, I always bid against to get that years ago.
Alright, so. What lands, what land goes with this lot right now?
This here, here.
Well, all of this goes.
No, no, this does not go, this piece does not go with that, but you can see, there's no lot, see, there's no line across here, so these are connected.
But interesting, but this shows, this to be all wetlands, don't touch type of thing, like this whole section, not just up to a lot here or something like this.
Correct.
I.
Maybe it starts here, oh, and goes all the way across.
I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that part right there, but I mean, that's, that's crazy.
That's not us, that's.
Well.
I mean, I think this.
He gives him the eight acres, that's why he's a gentleman.
Yeah.
There's nothing that's gonna be done to that, possibly.
How wide is this here?
Fifteen feet, I believe.
Yeah, it's about fifteen feet.
Well, this is five point three three, this one is one point two, that's seven.
Six, yeah, the six nine.
So there's almost the eight acres right here, so overall, this is gonna end up being a lot more than eight acres.
Doesn't matter, it's a big one of eight acres.
Yeah.
Does anyone know what is being done right here? It's cleared with a driveway, no idea, that's a separate, um.
That's Donald Anderson, is, is this the current owner right now, Donald Anderson?
As far as I know, it is, I, I couldn't tell you.
There already seems like.
Who's in it? Yeah, 'cause he's kind of over in.
A hundred and twenty-five feet, so it's not buildable.
Must have been bought.
So here's a ghost from this lot.
Well, what, to here, to here.
To the wet.
They put a driveway.
Is there water on it? Yeah, there's water again.
Here, up in town water.
Yeah, town water.
Town water, that's a positive situation, this, this lot.
So someone else is developing that property.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you live over here, sir?
I live right there.
So the problem with this land is, is a drain right here.
Right.
Yeah.
That's blocked, and the water builds up.
Yep.
That's the problem.
I know.
So, it, it isn't my fault, though.
No, I'm not saying it's not, it's nothing with you, it's been there. Well, no, I'm saying it's not, it's nothing with you, it's been there for. I've been there for forty-five years, and that drain's been like that for forty-five years.
Oh, okay, okay, right.
And I had to, I had to put a review person there to prevent that water.
And I, I tried to open up, please bring up, I called the town and.
So, um, we have any other stuff, others would like to speak at this time? So, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that we continue the public hearing for Zero Main Streets, um, Kent and Pamela Nicholson until our October second meeting. Until, um, page has been received by the administrative assistant, and also, um, Peter, if you're done by our engineer.
Second.
Okay, most of the main is second, and we're, we're gonna continue it to October second.
I'll have the plans updated to remove any reference to, uh.
Lot one.
Lot one, yeah.
Oh, that one, yes.
Yeah, that would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, it gets confusing.
I think, um, also, and I'll get in touch with, um, forgive me.
I, I mean, I know.
John Delano's office.
FASL A and G too, actually.
Um, John Delano's office, through discussions with the last, um, retreat lot we did, we, the fire chief and I and Peter Williams, we came up with specific language regarding driveways. If you recall, um, to meet NF.
NFPA.
Thank you, NFPA requirements under the state martial, um, codes, we came up with language to be placed on the plans. And it, it's incorporated with the decision, so I will get in touch with the Delano's office, so that the plans can be revised with that specific language as well, so that, um, in case.
And wasn't there also a requirement, I'm doing this from memory about there, was it two plans submitted?
A term.
A permit plan and then the final plan?
A permit, yeah, a permit.
I'll, I'll look at it, I'll get back to you right away.
Yeah, I don't recall that part, but I'll go through my file as well.
So if I could get a phone call on that, just because, because of the, uh, sense of the time.
Yes.
Factor involved.
That, a phone call on the.
If there's, uh, another plan that's needed, I.
Okay, yes.
I'll get my review letter in right away.
Sure, sure, and then we'll get that, that'll work.
Could have, could have two endorsements on the plan also, I believe.
I'll, I'll have to look at it.
One for the special permit and one for the plan.
I'll, yes.
I think so.
Okay.
But.
A registry endorsement and then the special permit endorsement, okay.
Yeah, I think you might be thinking of a covenant and a deed, that gets recorded with it, is that what you mean? I think that's what you.
No, I, I seem to recall maybe two, two spots on the plan, but the one for sign off on special permit and one for plan, but.
And there was a couple of them in notes, special notes.
I did, uh, didn't we correct that? Seventy-one or something.
I thought we corrected that, though, didn't we?
I think we did, but, um, we'll, we'll have it all together at our next hearing, at the continuing hearing, it'll all be in place.
We have.
This land, that's, that's why if I need to bring anything else.
Yes.
Please, by all means, let me know.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is made, the settlement is continual, our favor?
Aye.
Proposed extensions, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna move on to item four C, proposed kennel by law. Um, at this point, I'm gonna recuse myself, I'm up here, since I'll be making the presentation on behalf of the board of health. Carry, I think it's been a date on that. Okay, okay, um. Okay, I should have a copy of the new, uh, proposed motion for the upcoming town meeting, we hope. Um, there's been some changes since the last nightmare at the last town meeting. Um, we have, um, actually, I've added some definitions to try to make it clearer for people who are out there. Uh, the kennel definition comes from Mass General Law. The commercial kennel definition is what is already in our bylaws. And kennel license, uh, is actually what's in the general bylaws also, anybody who has four or more dogs shall obtain a kennel license. I did add at the, 'cause there was some confusion about how many dogs you could have and so forth, so on. And I added in there in the bottom in bold letters, a kennel license is not required for three dogs or less. And on a residential kennel, uh, I took out the size of the lot. And we'll let the zoning board decide on what size of a lot is appropriate, and how many dogs you can have. But we do know if you have four or more, that a kennel license is required. Now, one of the things I think people got confused out of the last town meeting, uh, when we speak of kennel, I think they're thinking about concrete and metal, a concrete and metal structure. That's not so, a kennel is exactly what it says here, uh, a collection of dogs on a single property. Uh, that, that came right out of the Mass Massachusetts general laws. It doesn't necessarily have to be a concrete metal structure. Uh, you can see your way to schedule a public hearing on this, and we can discuss any changes if necessary, that you think would be helpful to get it past town meeting. Right now, we have a residential piece of property with ten dogs on it, there's nothing we can do about it, for the most part.
My question is, there's no, I don't see anything here about fences or anything like that, is there no fence height, no?
It doesn't necessarily mean a kennel, like, if you picture a kennel, you picture like a chain link fence, but, like, like you said, a kennel is just four dogs or more, it doesn't matter if there's a fence or a doghouse or.
Yeah, but if there's four dogs or more, there should be, they should be fenced then.
It doesn't, no.
I think this.
It doesn't, it doesn't say that, I mean, if you're, depending on what's gonna, the zoning board is gonna be the, the authority, that's gonna tell the applicant. Whether they think they need a fence or not, depending on a piece of property. Now, we have other bylaws that govern, if you can't keep your, a, electric fences, okay. If you have, uh, four dogs or more, and you have an electric fence, and you have one of those, whatever they call them, on the dog, and it's working, then that's fine.
Well, if it's working, and also, what if somebody goes and turns the switch off, and something happens? I think, I honestly believe that a, a nice chain link fence would stop a dog, everything else.
It doesn't require it, though.
Well, we can.
Well, we can, yeah.
You know, that, that's my view, but, uh, I, I honestly don't agree with the, you know, doing something, going through all of this after what just happened. And, and we don't do something about a fence to hold these dogs, and that's, that honestly, that's my opinion, so.
And I have a problem with the, um, commercial, um, being on at least five acres of land, because, um, why five acres? You know, there, there's like a place where my wife trains her dog in Rainham called Performance Plus, and they also have kennels and boarding, and it's just in a, uh, like an industrial park type. They don't have no land, they just have a building, but obviously, they have a kennel license of some type. So, you know, that could be a business for someone.
Mm-hmm.
You know, somebody could build a building for, there, there's big money in dog training nowadays, uh, and all you need is a building, you don't need half five acres. So that would limit them. Uh, just like before, when we talked about having, you know, one acre or more to have a kennel license.
Yeah.
I didn't think that was fair, because there are a lot of homes in Dayton that have less than an acre, so you have to look at that, too.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
What is the, um, bylaw, does it define the uses that this governs?
Our present bylaw does not identify. The new one will, uh, identify, uh, where they can be and the various kennels, and the number of dogs that can be kept. Well, actually, not even the number of dogs, um, how this was brought about was that all our bylaw said was kennel, period. Didn't say kennel, residential kennel, didn't say commercial kennel, and, and it also said was not allowed, kennel was not allowed in a residential. Uh, it was only allowed in business area. So, as we move forward, we determine that, uh, the town administrator actually got this, that we, we do not have the authority to limit the number of dogs in a kennel in a residential area. That's where we're at, and that's the reason for this, um, you know, and the reason, one of the reasons we put five acres, uh, you know, you can put houses in a commercial area. So we try to keep it, if you're gonna have a lot of dogs, and I understand your point.
Right.
And, but then again, I guess if you're gonna have that, there are other rules and regulations that would apply. We can lower the, the size of the lot, um, but if they're always barking, then it becomes a nuisance. So I, I kind of agree with that, we don't need to make it five acres.
If they're barking, it becomes a nuisance, but it.
Only if they bark after nine o'clock at night.
You're not telling them where they can place the kennel, if it's a hundred feet or two hundred feet away from any other residents, if you were doing that, then I, I would agree with the acre. But you're not saying any of that, you, you follow?
Well, I get what you're saying, yeah, I give you an example, years ago, when I was living behind my parents' old house, a person had, had three or four German Shepherds. He decided at night to put them over in the.
Next to the other room.
Old greenhouse next to the house. Well, I did a complaint, and Board of Selectmen said they have to come in by nine o'clock at night, so.
That could be placed on this, you know, I, I.
Well, you know, it's better than what we have, at least it identifies districts and where, where they can go. Um, I would consider, and I, and I think the smaller acreage, five acres is quite a bit of land.
Yeah.
And, and as far as a fence, the state doesn't require it, the, depending on the size of the lot, the zoning board may require a fence.
I, I still.
But you're gonna keep it, we have bylaws that say you're gonna keep your dogs on your property.
Exactly, well, whether it's five acres or a hundred acres, if you don't have the area fenced then for the animals not to go off that property, you still have the chance of those dogs attacking somebody, a hunter or whatever it may be, if you're gonna have dogs like that, I, I don't.
Well, you can't distinguish between one dog or another.
No, 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 I understand that, I understand that, but I've been, I've been bitten by a little dog, too, you know, so.
Well, this is true, and when we went to town meeting and people were talking about kennels, first thing your head was, heard was, I got five Chihuahuas, I'm not gonna build a kennel with fence and all them for that, them to stay in the house.
That's where the zoning board comes in.
It's different than five pit bulls, they say, well, you can't distinguish, so I'm not gonna, you know, I would suggest we don't put anything above fence, but if, uh, the zoning board, I get bear in mind, you can still have up to three dogs, there's not too many people that have, well, there probably is more than three dogs, but. Um, I, I would just request at this time, the board, uh, move it forward to a public hearing, and perhaps we can lower the acreage, and, and then we'll make it acceptable to this board. Um, the zoning enforcement officer, he doesn't even agree with kennels at all in a residential district, so.
Um, if I may, Mr. Robert, would you like to speak?
I kind of agree with both sides of this, if it's commercial, and you're in a residential area, I agree with the five acres, because you've got people right next to you, and they got a kennel license, there's gonna be problems as far as noise. If you're gonna do that as far as commercial, it should be in an industrial site, like you said.
Right.
If it's an industrial site, then you can lower the acreage to a Pacific, whatever you want, spare footage or whatever you want, but that's an industrial area.
Right.
Where it isn't gonna bother a neighbor, you know what I mean, because you're just gonna make bad neighbors out of good neighbors, when you start putting kennels in a residential area.
Right.
That's my opinion, if you have five acres, then you can contain them, somewhere in that five acres not to be a nuisance.
We do have industrial zones now that have a business overlay, I should probably add a section in there that said.
Yeah.
In that, in that zone.
Because, you know, those businesses are popping up all over.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they are, yeah, but they're in industrial zones.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're not in, in resi, in residential.
There's a new one right on Route one, if you're hitting the Mass Pro Shop on the left, it's a big one.
I think we're gonna add that section, I can add that, so, Gary, right?
Just like the doggy daycare, care places, most of them are in industrial areas, very industrial, that's where they are.
Right. Like that.
I'd add, so add another section about industrial zones or industrial overlay. When's the public hearing gonna be?
Well, we, that's what we're discussing right now, so we need to have, the public hearing has to be on October sixteen. So, but it has to go to the paper tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning?
Yeah, because it's gotta be published in the paper for October first.
We can put it up till November, beginning of November, right?
But that'll set back the ZB.
No, because, well, the special town meeting is October twenty-eighth. Yeah, so, what I would suggest.
I will have you, I will have you a paragraph tomorrow designating, uh, the zones with less than five acres.
Okay.
In an industrial.
First thing you're putting.
I don't believe a kennel's allowed in an.
I agree with Tony, too, like, in a re- residential area, five acres, that would alleviate a lot of problems for, for residents.
Right, and like Joe said, too, about electric fences, they're only as good as, you know.
They are.
No, it, it, as far as them things, they malfunction.
Power, power outage, battery failure.
Anything, anything like that. The dog has got to be restrained, really, you see what happened to this town with someone that killed?
The town, yeah.
Right.
You know what I mean, and you guys are gonna let us go? I mean, you gotta address it now, if you're gonna bring it before a public hearing.
I agree.
I mean, I'm, I got dogs, and I know, and they're not attack dogs or anything like that, I use a lot of.
My question is, is can the town legally require a resident that says they have three dogs, and as you see, Tony, you know, you can buy, um, metal kennels that are basically fifteen or twenty by twenties, you set them up, usually two, three in a row, depending on how many dogs you have, there's plenty of room for they, you know, to be in. Um, a lot of times, people shave them, um, could the town make that as a requirement of someone to have on their property, if they're gonna hose it?
I think with three dogs, I think with three dogs, you can restrain, a person can, you know, restrain three dogs, if, you know, they're properly.
Well, if you have four or more, I mean, I would not put my dog in no kennel.
A lot of people won't, a lot of people won't, and I don't think it's a requirement, but if you have more than four, a four or more, then you're required to have a kennel license. But there's gonna be restrictions on kennels, as far as, like Joe said, with fences and stuff like that.
I think one thing that we have to keep in mind is what's being proposed right now is just, the only thing that we're proposing right now in the bylaws is the definitions, right?
And total of dogs, I mean, that's true.
Well, we can add some, some things that, yeah.
Well, well, and that's within the definition.
Okay.
So right now, what you're proposing to do is, you're proposing to amend the definition of a kennel from just kennel to a commercial kennel, a kennel license, and a residential kennel. Within that, the scope is the granting authority, which is the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
That is granted, kennel licenses are granted through the, uh, special permit granting authority, and that's the zoning board of appeals. When that is granted, that's where they determine how that license is set up, so they're the ones that determine the fencing, how the, the kennels are boarded, how the establishment is. So I think we're kind of going beyond, this is just my opinion, but we're going a little bit beyond the scope of what you're really proposing to do here.
The scope.
Yeah, okay, alright, okay.
Right now, we're, we're proposing just to define. So I think we're kind of going beyond, this is just my opinion, but we're going a little bit beyond the scope of what you're really proposing to do here, right now, we're, we're proposing just to define what the kennel is.
Okay.
You're, you're being, you're basically making a more specific definition of what a kennel is, a commercial versus a residential.
But.
You're going beyond.
And when we, and, and when we.
No, my laws can supersede state laws.
They can, and so does, they, they can, but that's not what they're proposing to do tonight, what they're proposing to do tonight is just defining what the kennel is, a commercial kennel.
Yeah, the zoning board.
And the zoning. Commercial versus zone, a residential?
A, a commercial kennel, and a residential kennel, so they're defining the two kennels, and then within that is who the granting authority is, which is the zoning board of appeals, and when they grant a kennel, it's by a special permit, the special permit is granted by the zoning board of appeals, and that's where the debt, that's where the actual kennel is defined on how that kennel is set up, so whether you, as an individual, have five Chihuahuas, and you're going for a residential kennel, well, they're gonna determine whether you need a six-foot fence, or you need five crates inside your house, right?
There's gonna, there's gonna be some guidelines.